And commission meeting for when. Sorry about that. Welcome, everybody to the planning commission meeting for Wednesday, June 16th, 2021. We I like to start with the pledge of allegiance. So Senior Planner Levitan, if you could share the flag, I will go ahead and lead the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next is on to the roll call. So when I mention your name, if you could confirm the ear in attendance, Commissioner Welch.
Here.
Commissioner Osland. Commissioner Doer. Commissioner Holt.
Present.
Thank you. And then for Commissioner Davis, she did send out a a message and she's dealing with the family emergency. So our thoughts are with her and I'd like to make a motion to excuse her absence tonight. Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And then as far as Commissioner Osman, I did not hear from her. So hopefully she comes in and we can get her on and and go from there. But in I guess until then we'll move on. I'd like to welcome Councilman Peter Shagan. Thank you for joining us tonight. And next is the guest business. So any items not on the agenda, not related to the public hearing, you'll have a chance to speak later. So if there's anybody in the audience, now is your time to speak. Hearing nothing, we'll move on to the action items. I do see there are no action items is is that related to Jenny being out last week?
Yes.
As far as the minutes?
Yeah.
Yeah. So I just I'll just make a motion for the June 2nd minutes to be included in our next planning commission meeting on July 7. Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on, now we're on to the public hearing. So I'd like to open the public hearing for the lot status code amendment. And I'm going to pass it on to associate planner Gasaway.
Thank you, Commissioner Crowden. I thank you, everyone and all commissioners. Welcome this evening. Tonight I am presenting the lot status code amendment and I will be sharing a PowerPoint in just a moment. Everybody see my screen?
Yes.
And there we are. Right. So as I indicated, lots has code amendment. L U A 2021 001. This is the fourth time this is being provided to planning commission. There have been re work sessions for this project so far. For a background in history, the lot status code amendment serves to establish whether a parcel was created legally under the regulations in place at the time the lot was created and to establish if it is eligible for development. This is particularly important, as we've discussed before, for lots that were created prior to the implementation of state law RCW 5817 in 1969, which put in place the regulations behind property division for states and then, excuse me, for the statewide and then for independent jurisdictions to then follow. Since that implementation, there have been several attorney generals opinions that have stated that cities have the right to make lot status determinations when lots come into question that were divided prior to the implementation of this RCW. Currently, the city lacks a codified process. We have been using administrative policies for some decades now and it doesn't provide a a review criteria and it doesn't provide appeal options for applicants. And we have provided a draft code amendment for planning commission to review in the last two work sessions. And so moving forward, the code as written included in your packet provides a determination process, some middle requirements and a decision criteria, alternative methods for determination, and also what happens when prior determinations have been made for lots that were made prior to the county or done outside of city process. This Land use code amendment is a type six land use application that requires a planning commission, public hearing and recommendations from the planning commission to city council. Staff has determined that the proposed amendment meets the decision criteria for a code amendment under 1446075 and is exempt from CIPA environmental review as it is a procedural decision and is exempt for that for that. Excuse me, exempt for that purpose. Commission is asking, excuse me, this has been brought to the Department of Commerce for excuse me, for expedite review and has been approved and the commission asking to take public comment deliberate and make a recommendation of approval to this code amendment. We have a public hearing intentionally scheduled for July 13th if planning commission wishes to make a recommendation of approval and move forward. Given that, does any of the commissioners have any questions, comments?
Thank you, Planner Gasaway. Yeah. So now if any, if any of the commissioners have any questions for staff, go ahead and fire them off.
I I have a couple and I don't know, this is Janice, by the way, I don't know if we're going to have public comment tonight, but it is one of those. It's kind of a sleeper. In our in our packet that could have a lot of repercussions and I'm thinking about properties within prior determinations. There there's wording in there that leaves it for interpretation where it's been determined before might be might be adjusted when it comes into the city of Lake Stevens. Is that your impression or am I just reading this in a way that's coming in in kind of an awkward stance?
So the intention behind prior determinations is that if a lost task determination was previously issued by Snohomish County, the city would in fact accept that determination. That's what the prior determination is intended for. On and that if the in case that the second piece for the authority to review lots that were altered through boundary line agreements, that is a capturing of what we have identified is happening when property lines are being during a boundary line agreement, but hasn't been reviewed by the city, which is an option under the RCW, but it is important that those also still get reviewed so they ensure to ensure that they still meet city code. So that's what item eight, one and item two are describing.
Awesome. Thank you. And I appreciate your your explanation on that. Can can lots be swapped? If you have a wetland lot that is, you know, lot status, but you have a lot next to it that doesn't have lot status, can you swap? I'm just thinking of our topography. Can you swap wetland for for another lot and and make one lot status versus another?
So the lot status is going to be tied to the parcel number. So if there are two separate parcels, no, a lot styles determination can't be swapped between parcels as the determination is based on that lot. So in the case that you're describing, it sounds like the buildable area, if it meets the criterias under this, which we have tried to build towards, we would be able to grant a lot status for that lot that's buildable. And the one that has the wetland, we would probably review through a reasonable use.
Okay. Thank you. One last question. If there is a previous applicant through the county that has been denied, would the city then review that again? Or is that previous denial upheld?
I have never encountered a denial from this from the county, as the county is pretty liberal with their loss size determinations. That would be a unique question. I think we would have reason if there is reason that the county would deny it, it would follow suit with a similar denial that we would give based on the code we have written today.
And I would say for my part, that would fall under a prior determination that, you know, whether it's positive or negative, we would honor the the work that the county has already done.
Thank you, Russ. There's your answer.
No, and Sabrina, you had already alluded to that in past, but I wanted it. I wanted it on record that this can't be. This isn't a redo. This isn't a redo. This is a an alignment, in my opinion, with what is already being done in the county and with new annexations coming in. I need to feel confident that this is going to align with what's already been done and that there aren't going to be any sort of backdoor agreements that are going to alleviate some of the things that people getting lot status either get granted or not. And and I just want to feel assured of that before I send this on. So thank you so much. I appreciate your presentation. You've been very dedicated in your your research of this topic.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Huxford. Yeah. And as far as I'm concerned, I think it is important to tighten up the determination status. I guess the only question I have is on F2, just just for the tax, the tax segregation with those dates, the March 4th, 1972 and the December 31st, 1968. Is that the same dates that the county currently uses?
Um, so the tax segregation is meeting back more to state, if I'm not mistaken. So the first number, the parcel was created in by a tax segregation process prior to March 4th, 1972. That was the up, that was the date that the RCW 5817 was finally like adopted and implemented and tightened up. The 1969 laws that were put in place show have kind of a gap when projects were submitted and then put forward. So there's a little bit of a gap in the code adoption between the 1969 and 1972. And that 1972 date is when the tax segregation process was into the RCW, if I'm not mistaken. The parcel defined it by meets and bounds a legal description conveyed by notaries date prior to 1931 or excuse me, December 31st, 1969 would be the year before the like the end of 1968, which was the year before the adoption of the RCW.
Thank you very much. That answers my question.
Okay, but it answered or it asked one for me with apologies. I I've gone through this process recently and it was the 69 date that I was asked to go back to. So is it 68? Is it 69 or is it 72?
So the 1972 is a minor revision to the 1969 RCW. The the first implementation of the RCW requirements regarding subdivision of property was the 1969. There was a modification revision regarding tax segregation, which was adopted in 1972. And we have taken the December 31st, 1968 as that was used in a couple of different codes in our research specifically in Monroe.
Okay, so does this align with Snohomish County?
Maybe I can stab it answering this. What we've tried to do is capture the dates from state statute that were described in the AG opinions. And then if there are some other dates, those codify the dates of acceptance with Lake Stevens code, when the Lake City of Lake Stevens has adopted subdivision regulations or modifications to those. So that's really what we're trying to align with are the important dates from the state statutes and then locally, when have we adopted our own regulations and things that would precede those or really what need those determinations?
So so it won't be copacetic with Snohomish County. It will be Lake Stevens specific, but mirroring up with local municipalities.
Correct. It will be similar, but we have, as you say, our own Lake Stevens flavor on this, looking at our own dates. So.
And it won't supersede anything that's been had before. And anybody that has been denied by Snohomish County before won't be able to interplay this new code to resubmit.
No, it should follow what the the code that was in effect when they had the determination prior.
Okay, okay, but it won't. Okay.
Thank you all for that discussion. Are there any other commissioner questions for the staff? All right, hearing nothing. It's now I'd like to open the public comment portion. So if you, if there's anybody in the audience who has anything to ask of the staff or to to state to the staff, please raise your hand through the Zoom app, state your name and your address and you can speak when you're ready.
Chair Cronin, can I welcome Chair Osland aboard? And then I make a motion to open the public hearing. Or I think you already did. So I will second that. Thank you.
Thank you for tightening that up, Commissioner Huxford, and welcome Commissioner Osland. So with that, we are on to the public comments portion. It sounds like there's no comments. So I'm going to go ahead and now close the public comment portion of the hearing. Can I have a motion to close the public comment portion of the hearing?
I'm moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you. Then now now we're on to just the deliberation before before we get to closing the hearing. I'll give everybody. If anybody has one last thing they'd like to say before we make a motion on make a motion on the lot status code amendment. Please take the time now to do so. All right. So hearing nothing and it sounds, I think everybody's in agreement. So I'm comfortable making it a motion. I'd like to make a motion to forward a recommendation to the city council to approve the proposed code amendments to LSMC 14 dot 16 C dot 78 to adopt regulations for lot status review and determinations. Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you all. And that closes the public hearing. Next on to the discussion items, I'm going to pass on to Planning Manager Levitan for the impact fees code amendment introduction.
All right. Thank you, Chair Cronin. So this will just be a brief discussion. We wanted to introduce you to this topic before we moved it forward to potential public hearing stage. So impact fees, for those that aren't familiar, they're one time fees that the cities authorized under state law to charge related to development to help mitigate impacts on the city's public infrastructure and capital facilities. And so the city has within the municipal code in section 14 point 100, 14 point 112 and 14 point 120 has existing impact fees for schools, which the city then passes along to the school district, parks and then traffic. And so the last time that this was amended was, I believe, back in 2012. So there have been a few annexations that have been approved since then. But the traffic impact zone specifically is the the major item that's been impacted by annexation as far as the city has established three separate traffic impact zones for the city that was included. I believe it's one to your packet basically shows that kind of traffic impact zone one is generally the downtown and kind of northeast portion of the city. Traffic impact zone two is kind of the northwest western part of the city frontier village. And then traffic impact zone three is currently the southwest portion of the city. So as part of this work to impact to update our impact fees specifically related to traffic, we're proposing to basically expand traffic impact zone one and traffic impact zone three. So traffic impact zone one would extend south and traffic T I Z three would extend to the east to cover the southeast interlocal annexation as well as the recently completed Machias industrial annexation. So that is the major item related to this code amendment, really the the item that we need to include because we need to expand those boundaries to reflect the both recent and upcoming annexations. As noted in the staff report, the parks impact fee is something that there's a pretty complicated formula within the municipal code right now. Goes over a lot of different items and specifically as it pertains to how park impact fee money can be spent on capital facility projects related to parks and recreation. Staff believes that there needs to that that section of the code especially really needs to be simplified and it needs to be reviewed. And so we're proposing to come back on July 7th after we do a little bit more research as far as how we might refine that section. And really just make it easier to administer. The city's been relying on an administrative policy as far as implementing that section of the code. And we just want to kind of streamline that and make it a whole lot easier to interpret and to administer. And then the only other item really related to the school impact fees is there's currently no specific reference to the Snohomish School District. Historically, the city has been covered pretty much only by the Lake Stevens School District, but with the Redora annexation, a portion of Snohomish School District was brought into the city. And that'll be further expanded with the southeast interlocal annexation. When that becomes effective, we're going to have some additional area within the Snohomish School District. So we need to adopt their capital facilities plan as part of our 2021 docket and then also want to amend this section of the code to specifically call out that this also applies to Snohomish School District fees. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Planning Manager Levitan. Does anybody have any questions?
I guess I'll start. I'm glad to see that we're making a move to go ahead and get these T I Zs figured out for the new stuff. This is going to only encompass the stuff we've recently annexed. Is that correct?
Yeah, so it would it would add that area for Machias, add that to T I Z one, and then it would basically add the northern portion of the southeast interlocal annexation to T I Z one and then the southern portion to T I Z three. We wouldn't be expanding these to cover other areas within the UGA, but we're proposing to include some standard language in the code amendment that would basically automatically assign the contiguous T I Z. So that's there isn't really any lack of clarity as far as which zone would be applied when area future areas are annexed.
You just answered my question. My next question, if we can do the future annexation areas into this already and that was already preplanned. So appreciate that.
Yeah, so it's essentially kind of creating a pre designation basically by saying that it'll be the area directly contiguous. It'll be the same designation as those areas directly contiguous.
Okay. And I guess when it comes to the parks, I know we're only just briefly discussing those things. I noticed on a couple of other jurisdictions, we have a six year plan. We have to use the money by six years. I was looking at Marysville, they go up to 10 years. Is that so that might be feasible for us to enter that code is maybe change our how how fast we have to use or designate that money out maybe from six to 10 years to give us more of a leeway on using the money, especially as new park mitigation funds come in and we decide what's happening over the next few years.
A couple of things with the the numbers, we do a six year plan and that just says the projects that we want to develop in six years, then that gets boiled down to an annual plan and budgeting. What are we doing that year? But under state law, we do have 10 years to use our concurrency based fees.
And then the other one was I had a note I made. When it comes to the school impact fees, because we we mentioned Lake Stevens indirectly, I was reading on Marysville's, they actually have because we say the district every constantly and throughout that thing, they have a nice definition of what they call the district in their definitions, which basically directly says means a school district where geographic boundaries are within the city of Marysville. So I think that might be a good type of addition. And that basically then covers no matter what school district would be in the city of Lake Stevens and all you had to do is change the word, the district, just add S's everywhere and just move Lake Stevens out of everything. I think might be an easy way to fix the Lake Stevens and Snohomish School District issue.
No, I appreciate that. I think that's a that's a good idea. And Snohomish School District, I think their impact fees, I'd have to look at them are a little bit lower because their levy rate is a little bit higher. And so they definitely, there's a little bit of difference, but it would be easier to basically capture all districts and kind of define it that way.
I think that's all that's all the input I have at this moment.
Thank you, Commissioner Welch. Are there any other comments?
I I had a had a question regarding the traffic impact zones. When determining kind of where the borders of those zones are, particularly as we start to head towards the east side, the southeast side of the lake, is it are the borders drawn by effectively lines on a map? Or is there any consideration given to kind of where that traffic ends up going? So for example, the additions to zone one do are would they be, is it assumed that their largest impact would be within zone one? Or would they perhaps be heading down through zone three to exit Lake Stevens to Snohomish or Everett?
Yeah, so we had kind of proposed this based on, you know, with initial review on on likely patterns of traffic. And so we had looked at development potential, some of the larger parcels, if I say a larger subdivision had gone in that kind of right there at the boundary between the proposed boundary between one and three. You know, that a larger subdivision would likely go down 123rd and really have more of an impact on T I Z three. There's a little bit less development potential to the north and kind of thinking about the general generation and distribution of trips. The the initial thought was that that seemed more appropriate to be within T I Z one. We can have some additional discussions with our Public Works Director. We're hopefully in the process of hiring a city engineer and kind of get them more involved to, you know, kind of run this by them, you know, have a a more detailed conversation if if the commission thinks that's necessary.
All right. Thank you. I was just asking more more just to ensure that at least some thought along those lines had gone into it and it sounds like it has. So thank you.
Correct.
Thank you. Anyone else?
If I remember right, now, there's a significant difference between the traffic impact fees between one and then two, three. Is that correct? Because two, three, I think are zoned together because of their funds.
So there is a difference. Let me see what the exact difference is.
Well, that's, but they, two and three do go together. Is that are like together either the fees?
They do, yes. So there's two of them that are the same, I mean.
Yeah, two and three have the same amount, they're the, the same fee. I believe it's somewhere around, I want to say thirty-four hundred or something like that, and the zone one is somewhere around three thousand thirty-one hundred. But yeah, we have grouped two and three together in the past because they're more closely related with traffic patterns. But the actual dollars within those can only still support the projects in those zones.
Okay, thanks.
And so just to clarify, T I Z one is based on our twenty twenty-one fee resolution is two thousand seven hundred and seventy-one dollars, and then zones two and three are thirty-five hundred dollars, and that's per peak hour trip.
Thank you.
I would, I would offer up just a comment, and it's coming into my brain just at this moment, but there was a comment made during the annexation discussions that the south end intersections, I believe of South Lake Stevens Road and Machias were at dismal recordings with Snohomish County and were considered unsafe at this point without new construction coming in. So, and I'm doing this, again, I didn't pull this information down, I should have, but there is a concern in this community being newly annexed that these intersections that everybody is feeding out on are not going to be well-maintained, monitored, or safe.
Quick, Commissioner, could you say that intersection one more time?
It is the, and you're going to quote me. You're going to quote me.
I'm just looking on my map, that's all.
Well, I, I believe it is the intersection of South Lake Stevens Road into Machias Cut Off Road at the south end of the lake, right as it tees into that. Right now, it is a it is a one-way stop thorough. They've put in a walkway, which you have to do a, a push a button and do a, a flashing light to walk through, but God help you if you do it. And there is building all around it, so you can't do a roundabout. You can't do, you know, you know what I mean? It's, it's like this juggernaut, but all of that hun- hundred and twenty-third, all of the Redora stuff is feeding into that. And if you want to get to South Lake Stevens or downtown Lake Stevens, you've got to take South Lake Stevens to get there. And so it's, it's becoming this, this major intersection without it really being. And heaven help you if you're, if you're trying to get in and out of that area, so.
Yeah, and so as, as Russ had noted, you know, the, for development, the, the traffic impact fees that are generated within each zone would need to be spent within that zone. If you look at the the buildable lands report and just generally assess the development capacity, development potential throughout the city and especially within the annexation area, the majority of that would, would be within area three. And that specific intersection is within area three. It would need to be identified on the city's capital facilities plan. And so there would be an opportunity for traffic impact fees, you know, from some of, you know, these potential new subdivisions within area three to go towards capital improvements within area three. And so we can take some, an additional look as far as potentially whether that boundary should extend further to the north to capture additional parcels, if that's where the, the trip distribution is likely to go. But that was kind of our thought process as far as the proposed boundaries and the potential improvements that would be funded through, through development that occurred in the future.
And another part of, I, I think what you're really asking Commissioner Huxford is, what are, what are the planned improvements? And that will be part of our capital facilities element review this year that we've reached out to Snohomish County Public Works to have them identify any project areas. So far, they've not identified anything that was on their capital plan or intended to be. So that's working with our public work staff then to get a handle better on the streets in those areas and long-term look at what does the city want to bring into its own capital facilities plan.
Well, and, yes, and I, I appreciate that, and I think that's a, a great start. I also think that that would be a nice nod to the newly annexed in, not just myself, duly noted, but newly annexed in Redora and elsewhere to know that their concerns, first being development, second being transportation, were acknowledged. At this point, we haven't received anything from the city and, and all we know is that, you know, we've been annexed in and and things will remain the same. And remaining the same is concerning. So that would be a nice place to start. Let me just throw that out there. That'd be a great place to start.
Annexation's not complete yet, and everyone will be notified when it is complete and get a whole bundle of information.
Very lovely.
Thank you all. Any last comments for staff? All right, with that, let's move on to the commissioner reports. Commissioner Welch?
Nothing to report.
Commissioner Osland?
I have no report today.
Commissioner Holt?
No report today.
Commissioner Dorr?
No report.
Commissioner Huxford?
One quick, and then I'll, I'll get off of this subject, but marijuana. We did have a city council meeting where there was a couple of people that made public comment. I think a couple of the commissioners said it on that. It'll be interesting to go back and see who voted what, but I would just lend myself to the fact that Councilmember Peter Shagan voted for our motion. He was joined by Councilmembers Tagent and Dottry. Two of our council members abstained from the vote, and two did not choose to vote with us. So I would, I would just, as a commission that spent six months on a topic that we didn't know was going to be on our docket this year, go back and, and look and see. But thank you to Councilwoman Peter Shagan for knowing that we, we gave a lot of thought to this. It was a compromise. I think it was a good compromise and sustainable. And so thank you very much to him, to the other commissioners. I would just simply ask that you go back and look and see who voted for and against the hard work that we did. So thank you very much. Appreciate the time.
Thank you, Commissioner Huxford. Yeah, and I'll, I'll second some of that sentiment, too. I think, thank you, First Commissioner Huxford, just for bringing that to light. It's easy to go through six months of doing that, you know, not really see what happens on the backend. So thank you for that, and, and, yeah, I appreciate it. And then secondly, with the for my report, I'd like to congratulate the four Burt Cronin Award winners at Lake Stevens High School for athletics, schooling, and, and also for leadership, Callaway Knutson, Noah Wright, Madeline Co., and Michelle Fast. So congratulations to them, and my family looks forward to continuing that tradition. So that is all for the commissioner reports, next to the planning director's report. So I'll hand it over to Planning Director Wright.
Okay, thank you, Commission. A few things for you tonight, and the first one, you just heard about the results of the council's vote, holding up your recommendation for the marijuana amendments. Reminder to the planning commission that the city council will be going on their hiatus between July and mid-August. In a couple of minutes, I want to talk to the commission about their schedule, but I'll run through the rest of my items first. Snohomish County tomorrow, Planning Advisory Committee last week recommended the updated countywide planning policies and the updated buildable lands report to move on to the steering committee for their review. Also, at the last Snohomish County tomorrow meeting, I was elected as the chair of the PAC as well as the representative for other cities to Puget Sound Regional Council. So that'll bring Lake Stevens' voice and issues forward on a more regional scale, so that will be great for the community. And then I wanted to share with the commission that we held an open house this last week with the park board, looking at the redevelopment of the Twentieth Street ball fields, which is one of the projects in our capital plan and in our comprehensive plan. And then with that, I did want to ask the commission a little bit about what your thoughts were on a summer schedule. I know some of you have reached out to David and have suggested in July and August that you'd like to just have one meeting, so really trying to determine what those days are. Tentatively, David and I have talked about holding the first meeting in July and then the second meeting in August. That would then give you a similar break like councils having. So just wanted the feedback from the commission on what you'd like to see for your July and August dates.
I'm pretty flexible, to be honest with you, Russ. I think I could accommodate, you know, I appreciate that, having one each month, and I think I could accommodate, you know, the other planning commissioner schedules.
Well, if I can just see a general head nod north to south on that proposal, then that's what we'll do.
So you're proposing July seventh and August fourth, correct?
August eighteenth. Is that the date, David?
It is, yeah. I, I originally by email proposed having it just the two main meetings, the first Wednesday of the month, but then we had some additional discussions. I know Commissioner Davis will be absent on the fourth, and we thought that maybe just holding that second meeting in August would give a similar break to the council break. So we're proposing July seventh and August eighteenth now.
Okay.
Yeah, speaking for myself, that works pretty well. I have one, one thing planned in late July, so.
And I think I'm good on both of those dates. Eighteenth, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I think I'm okay.
Okay. And Dave, do you want to go over future agenda items real quick then, and then we can let everybody go about their business?
Yeah, so as far as your next meeting on July seventh, our plan would be to come back with the long-awaited kind of final work session on permissible uses with the hope that then we'd be ready to move forward to a public hearing on August eighteenth. Also want to bring back check in, have Melissa come back and give an update on some of the non-conforming use language, and then kind of related to that is the Shoreline Master Program update. I'm continuing to at least try to work with ecology on a public engagement plan to really get that going and kind of really refine the scope of that. So those are the, the three major items that we're thinking of bringing back before you in July and August with, with two of those potentially being ready for public hearing on August eighteenth.
Thank you. Well, I think that is, does anybody, any commissioners have any questions for staff on what Planning Manager Levitan just went over? All right, here, hearing nothing. Congratulations, Russ, on your appointments. I think that'll be great to have, you know, Lake Stevens' voice furthered, you know, in the area. And I guess with that, I'd like to make, make a motion to adjourn the Planning Commission meeting for June sixteenth, twenty twenty-one. Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.